I'd like to call a regular Board of Education meeting to order on April 9, 2018. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Kelly.
Seward, here. Babston, here. Mr. Rikaskin, here. Mr. Wilson, here. Mr. Wolf, present. Mr. Zough, excused. Babston, present.
Present. Our exits are in the back of the OCA. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals. Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried out. The board's expected to return at 7:30. Not soon. Sorry for the little delay there. So we do have some, oh, before I go to the, we're doing the agenda, we do have two workshops tonight. The first one is going to be from Cecilia and Mr. Wright. Eric, so you guys want to go ahead?
Good evening. I'm Celia Dance-Romley, Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services.
Eric Wright, Executive Director, Curriculum and Instruction.
So we'd like to share with you at workshop tonight the highlights of proposed professional development and curriculum initiatives carrying us into the 2018-2019 school year. As a quick reminder and refresh, part of our work through this year and what continues on leading us into 18-19 school year is the alignment of our work out of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment and the overall division of Instructional Services with our Board of Education goals. And so just some quick highlights of the work that's been in progress throughout this year around all of our, all of our goals is really focusing on how we both are seeking at, how we're seeking out competitive grants as well as maximizing all of our Title II funds as it supports professional development and the curriculum work in the district to offset what's in our operating budget for the division. Our curriculum, 21st century learning goals, has been focused around the expansion of course offerings and the continued development of our written and articulated curriculum for our classroom teachers. In the area of community engagement, this has been about continuing the outreach of communication of the work that we're doing across all of our stakeholders and also putting purpose and intention around fostering and developing our community partnerships. In relation to the diversity goals, certainly, you know, one part of that is around the hiring process, but this is also, as it relates to the day-to-day work in our classrooms, this is about identifying the strengths and barriers within the systems and structures of the district that operate what's happening in our classrooms across, across the district. And so as we've done that work, you know, we're excited about some of the new partnerships, some of the new funding opportunities that are on the horizon, and we'd like to walk you through some of those highlights. We've been focused over the last two, two and a half years, as Eric and I have come into the, into these new leadership roles in the district, around themes of our professional development and our curriculum work. So as these continue on, one part of this is our statewide initiatives, the new New York State Learning Standards we want to talk a little bit about tonight. We want to talk about the continued work of our articulated written curriculum across K-12. We want to talk about the work that's leading us forward in leadership capacity development, how we're meeting needs of diverse learners through our professional development, and our focus on the integration of technology into classroom instruction. As it relates to statewide initiatives, it's been an exciting year and lots of new things on the horizon. So, you know, as a refresh, we talked very early on in the school year, but the New York State Board of Regions has been in a process of adopting new learning standards between the months of July and October of 2017. And so we now have statewide what's the next generation of learning standards for ELA in math, what's referred to as the new New York State Learning Standards in Science, Social Studies, and for the arts. And they, along with the adoption of the revised and new learning standards, they've also laid out a plan or a roadmap of what the rollout and implementation that districts and BOSEs are expected to follow. In here is the link, if you'd like more details, about what that roadmap looks like, what the timelines are of their expectations, and what it allows differently than in past, in past revisions of our learning standards is that there is a purpose, a purposeful plan of allowing these, these, this year and into, into next school year for districts to engage and deepen the awareness and the initial capacity development for all of our teachers in all of our classrooms. And so there is an expectation that while these will be in full implementation by the year 2021, that the work begins now, we certainly are well on our way as a district, and we're right on pace with where we're expected to be. And so that work, the deepening of the curriculum work, the deepening of the understandings and what it means as we assess where our curriculum is in relation to where we expect the learning for our students to be in the year 2021, is, is right where we need to be. And certainly, Mr. Wright's going to give us the details of what that work looks like into next school year.
Thank you. So, so as you know, we, we spent a lot of last year working with our elementary teachers on developing a curriculum. Prior, as we talked about in the past, the curriculum looked different in every building, so we wanted, want to align curriculum across our K-5 schools. So we spent the last 14 months doing that. And, you know, basically at this time, we're looking at just completing that task so that over the summer, we can look at the new standards and begin to make some revisions as needed. Just as one side note, we have one more day in the contract for Steph Harvey to return. We amended the contract. We wanted to amend our contract so that we can add an additional day due to the fact that after speaking with the principals, they informed me how much of a hardship it is to actually have so many teachers come out over the course of a day. So we wanted to add, you know, an additional day so we can spread out the amount of teachers that are leaving the buildings to, to continue the professional development work. So that was the reason for us putting the amendment in place and being that we had some additional funding in Title II, in our Title II funds, we thought that it would be appropriate, you know, just to support our principals. But going back to our literacy curriculum, you know, our teachers are excited just by the fact that we have made, you know, all of these revisions and so that we're well ahead of the game moving into, you know, the upcoming years where there will be a total revision. And as Cecilia stated earlier, come 2020-21, there will be a change in the assessment. So our, our children will be well prepared, well prepared for that change. In terms of math, we've been using Eureka Math over the past two years, and our teachers, you know, they are excited because they have text in front of them that we don't have to be copied and wait for it to come, to come to the schools. So it's been a big change. We've worked together to put planning around that to make sure that all the teachers are aligned when they are providing the new units, units of study. And as a result, what we're in the process of doing right now is just, we want to make sure that we put the next revision in place based off the new standards as well. So for the beginning of next year, we will have our alignment to the current state assessment, but then post-assessment, we will begin to make those revisions for future years. And I think that's the best way to go about making a change so that we're not making too many changes at one time. Just last week, I went to a training at BOSEs and was provided with information from the consultants there, and we talked about the best plan of approach, you know, for, or best approach for, for future planning for our school system. So the professional development will continue over the summer, but we'll be looking at just planning to make sure that we tweak for what took place this year and then post-session next year, post-state assessment next year, we will make a revision that will take us into years to come. In terms of our science curriculum, it's, it's very different. I've been working with Mrs. Orser over at, at Glenham just because she's the expert in science, you know, for our elementary building and our elementary buildings. And so working with her to decide what's the best approach for us to use, we've been going back and forth whether or not we want to look at purchasing a curriculum or will we build out our own, our own curriculum. We will be bringing together teachers to have feedback sessions, and then we will be deciding after that what's the best approach moving forward, because it will be a lot of work, you know, moving forward. The great thing about it is that we started the awareness sessions this year, and then we'll continue that throughout the summer and the beginning of next school year, but then we will be getting down to work in terms of working on our new curriculum. At Rhombau, they've, we, we've had the awareness sessions, we've had a consultant from BOSEs come in, she's had three sessions so far with our middle school science team, and there's one more session that'll be taking place this month. They've already began to revise their curriculum and then, and we've also had some discussion about whether or not we want to bring in some hybrid texts. And what I mean by that is some digital texts, you know, to support the curriculum. We've, we've talked to a couple of companies thus far, and the next step is just making some decisions about what is the best way to go. But as I stated, they will be well ahead of the game because of the fact that they will have a unit of study, at least one unit of study created by the end of the summer.
One question.
Yes.
So the, the, the science seems pretty explanatory, plus explanatory with the Beakers to, since they do a lot of primal science with the math.
Mm-hmm.
What, well, how are they augmenting the math with them?
So one of the, so one of the opportunities that's on the horizon, we just submitted for a math and science partnership grant with Clarkson on Friday. The proposal that we developed with our, with teacher input and with their input is that the concept of the use of mathematical models in both the teaching of math concepts as well as the teaching of science concepts is, is a theme that, that resonates in both, in both sets of learning standards. And so our proposal that we submitted for this grant would allow for some interdisciplinary work, but it's, it's looking at both science, math, and also inclusive of technology in an interdisciplinary way, using mathematical models to, to solve problems and complex issues. So that, that's what the connection is.
Well, thank you.
And then in addition to that, which I probably should have stated, is that we, we need to do some work around the standards. So we need to, as a team, middle school team, look at the standards, look at the current curriculum, to see where there are gaps and fill those gaps so that we ensure that we're meeting the needs of every student.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So grade six AIS. One of the things that we looked at last year is we looked at the AIS and RTI program at the middle school, and we decided where we needed to provide some supports. They were lacking some of the resources that they need, Mr. White. And so one of the things that we looked at was our, I mean, was purchasing Fontis and Pennell Benchmark Assessment because they didn't have a current assessment in, in, in the school. So our sixth grade teachers currently all have, our sixth grade ELA teachers have the Fontis and Pennell Benchmark Assessment. Our assistant principal, one of the assistant principals there, Ms. Price, Ms. Edelman, she actually provided the training to the teachers, and now they're, they're using the product. And from there, by using an assessment, we can find out what are the needs of every sixth grade student that is in the AIS program, and then we're able to put supports in place to meet their needs. One of the pieces that we did to help them was we purchased a guided reading program for those teachers to use so that now each day that students are in the AIS reading, they actually have a guided reading product to use with students. So they're able to differentiate the structure, the instruction based on the level of the students. And, you know, from, I've actually had the opportunity to go into a couple of the classrooms and see it at, and see them at work, and it seems to be working. Our goal is to, you know, in the very near future, probably starting next year, add Fontis and Pennell to the remaining grades there so that they'll have an assessment as well, so that we can assure that our students in seventh and eighth grade, we're able to meet their needs as well. We want to make sure that we're able to differentiate instruction, you know, to support the students. What we've also done so far this year is that we've provided for the seventh and eighth grade AIS teacher, we, we provided her with Fontis and, the Fontis and Pennell Assessment as well, and then we've also used some, some additional, additional resources such as a program called Read Live, which is a fluency-based program, so that students can use that program while she's providing her with the Fontis and Pennell Level Literacy Intervention Program. That's a program for students that are struggling, that, that are needing some additional support and comprehension. So she's just begun using that over the last month, and she uses that with three to four students at a time. So therefore, she has a way to provide the other students with a resource as well. That's why we put the Read Live program in place. I, I think I'll begin to talk a little bit about math, and Ms. Dance-Romley did as well. We also, I just want to add to that, our teachers have been going to, to BOSEs, Dutch's BOSE sessions on the math standards, and the goal will be for them to come back and term keep to their department so that everyone is in a loop in terms of the changes that are taking place. So at our high school, at Beacon High School, there, there have been a lot of proposed course curriculum, new courses, and, and we have to provide curriculum development over the course of the summer. I think it was spoken about in some previous board, board meetings, but AP Environmental Sciences, one, Field Biology, Laboratory Skills, Intro to Guitar, and Contemporary Art, which is in collaboration with Dea. In addition to that, our DCC Statistics Class course, it needed to be revised because of the changes that are taking place at, at Duchess Community in terms of that course. So over the summer, we plan on having teachers come together and teach that course in order to revise the curriculum. New textbook will need to be purchased for, you know, as the resource moving forward.
Another area of focus for us, and Dr. Landau has spoken of this at, through some prior budget presentations, but just as a refresh, in two areas, we'd like to move forward with developing some curriculum studies in the 18-19 school year. One area of focus, as, as you're aware, is around world languages and building out both the roadmap as well as the framework for us to be able to have additional language in place for the start of the 2019-2020 school year. The other area of, which will do some, some district-wide study work, is around CTE learning pathways. Purpose in both, in both of these is, you know, for us to be able to really have, from a, you know, multi-stakeholder group, assessment of student interests and needs, where are their unmet needs, being able for that group to go out and, for us to be able to look and both gather and synthesize research around current practices and innovation that's taking place in, in some districts, both within this area as well as outside of this area, with an overall goal that we're preparing, recommendations for the superintendent and for all of you, that will inform our decision, budget decision-making for the 19-20 school year. Another theme for us is around leadership capacity development as an ongoing, as an ongoing area of focus in our professional development work.
So one, one, one cliche that I use from time to time is collegial environment, and I think that, you know, it's super important for us here to have that collegial environment where teachers are coming together, you know, teachers are coming together, professional, I mean, administrators are coming together in a, in the name of professional development. You know, professional development should not only happen at our professional learning days, but also throughout different times of the day, year, et cetera, you know, such as, you know, having study groups, study groups after school, sessions during the course of the day. And, and so in order to do that, we have to begin to look at and tap into all of the resources that we have here and all the great teachers as well as administrators that are here in district. But in, in order to do that, the professional development has to take place for, you know, for the different teams. So for our administrative leadership team, you know, for this summer, Dr. Landau has worked tirelessly to bring in Dr. Sean Bradwell, who will be providing us with some diversity training, diversity and equity training. Also taking place this summer will be some, some training around instructional leadership. It's important for us to continue to grow as leaders, instructional leaders, so that we can support our teachers so that that work then trickles down to our students. So Dr. John Antonelli will be coming in as well, you know, over the course of the summer to work with the administrative team. School-level data, you know, is something very important for, for us as administrators to understand because we have to, we have to realize where are the gaps in learning. And so it starts with data, and so a lot of the training that we want to provide next year will be on that, will be on the understanding of, of school-level data. In addition, we're looking at developing school leadership teams. We, we need, we need our administrators working together with all their constituents to, to really help understand the needs of their schools, you know, so that it's not just coming from one voice. And once we begin to do that, we will tap into, we will tap into the resources that we have throughout our communities. In terms of our teacher leadership, you know, it's the same premise. We have, we have really good teachers, and we just need to support them so that they can begin to provide the professional learning opportunities, you know, for the rest of our constituents. You know, so next year, our content coordinators, we want them providing more learning opportunities for their departments or for their grade-level teams, et cetera. Teacher mentors, you know, they work a lot individually with, with, with their mentees, but we also want them providing workshops to, to, you know, even, even more teachers because it's important, you know, for us to grow as a community. So, which was a great opportunity for me to learn at, at my last workshop over in BOSEs last week, because it talked about meeting the needs of diverse learners. And when we look at the standards that have been in place over the last few years, there was something important that has been missing, and it's called understanding by design. And when we work under the premise of understanding by design, what we do is we meet the needs of all learners. And so the planning that takes place, you know, the curriculum that, that is developed, it meets the needs of everyone as opposed to being able, as opposed to having to pull out students in order to meet their needs. And so the, the new New York State standards, it addresses that often within the document. And so what we want to be able to do right from the beginning is tap into those, to those supports that we have right here in district. So for instance, our English, our English-language learners, we want to make sure that our E&amp;L teachers are providing those supports that are needed to, to our teachers, our monolingual teachers, our teachers who work with students with disabilities, et cetera, because when we are using, when we are implementing those strategies that our, our English-language learners use, they also help our monolingual students and our students with disabilities as well. In terms of our response to intervention, our RTI program, I think you may have heard me talk about at the beginning of the year that we had just developed our RTI plan for our elementary buildings. We also want to make sure that we have one in place for our middle school. So we've been working tirelessly to ensure that that takes place. And once it does, we want to make sure that it's being implemented with fidelity because that's the way we're going to support the needs of all of our students. And in terms of socio-emotional learning, this year, we had a consultant that actually is right from, who lives right in our district, right in Beacon, provide some strategies on mindfulness. You know, when I spoke to teachers afterwards, they, they expressed their, their happiness for that, for that workshop. You know, there, there was a lot that they took away from it. So we want to continue moving forward to, to, to bring that consultant back to provide more of those, those strategies for, for our faculty and staff. And then also restore the practices. We want to make sure that, once again, that we're meeting the needs of all students.
So last, the last area of our focus is a big one. So, and it's going to be one, as we build the foundation and continue to build the foundation, important as it carries us forward around our technology goals and the vision for one-to-one correspondence across the district K-12 over the next, over the next couple of years. And so the focus on this is around the integration of technology into classroom instruction. There's kind of twofold, twofold part. If you'll recall, back from earlier in the year, we talked about beginning a seventh-grade pilot of one-to-one. We had a couple of unanticipated, emerged hiccups, and it was a good way to describe it, but unexpected needs that cropped up along the way. We just had a planning meeting of building and district staff last week. We're looking, with now devices in place configured and a readiness at, at the, at the grade level, to be able to launch that the, the week of April 24th. And so there's plans in place for a parent session. There's information that will be coming home to parents over the course of the next week, a parent session prior to the deployment of devices. And so that, we talked a lot in terms of, you know, carrying through and the importance of carrying through this year. It will give us, even though it's only the last two months of school, it will give us the opportunity to be able to identify what's worked well, what do we need to think about, what are unexpected needs that have cropped up. The goal for us for September then is to be able to launch and expand upon that pilot of a single grade level to, to the use of one-to-one technology through our Chromebooks for all of grades six through eight at the middle level. So that's the next, the next level of the work. And then beyond that, as we look into future years, then the following year will be about where, the expansion of it, both as we expand up into high school, as well as what the expansion and the access to technology looks like moving down into elementary level. Overall, for next year, with the focus of individual Chromebook assignments for grades six through eight, there will also be an increased use and availability of the, the lab carts for classroom use as well as, and you heard Mr. Fisching given earlier, technology presentation, the expansion of the, the technology, interactive, interactive boards and that in the classroom, so for, at high school and, and elementary level. So what's important about that is we're getting the tools in, in place, the actual hardware and devices, is that we're continuing to build upon. We have lots of strengths across the district among our teaching staff, but this is about enabling everyone at all levels of where they are as adults with their, their comfort of the use of technology, both as an individual but also as a, as a facilitator of learning and how they plan and integrate that into, into the, the daily and weekly lessons and the overall units of study. This is about supporting those, that varied level of professional development needs. So just as we expect our students to have multiple entry points, this is also about multiple, multiple entry points for adults and supporting adults at all levels. And so there's going to be, again, the continued And so there's going to be, again, the continued, uh, opportunities of both, uh, basic level of understanding and getting familiar with the use of the Google, uh, Google Suite of, of, uh, software, of the use of Google Classroom, of being able, uh, to use smart technology or the interactive boards in the classroom, about the curriculum planning part of how we're integrating the use of Chromebook devices into, into instruction, and how we're able to use technology as the instructional tool that it is. Because the devices itself are not the, the, the beginning and the end point, but this is about how they're used as purposeful tools. So it's knowing what softwares we have, how we're using those as tools for the formative, the power of formative assessments and progress monitoring, how we're using them for the power of being able to have, uh, our, our students accessing hybrid curriculum materials. So the use of digital texts, the use of web-based instructional materials, the ability to enhance the learning that's going on in the classroom. And so there'll be a whole variety of those things, uh, and again, many of our teachers are, are leading the work with this, and this is about expanding those opportunities. Because within the, the next two years, when we have, again, more devices to be able to continue to expand, we want everybody to be ready to take on the work. So with that, we'll just ask if you have questions.
Yeah, uh, I missed the slide. I mean, I saw the slide, I didn't get a chance to get the question, but it's my fault. Uh, the CT learning pathways, um, are we, uh, do you have any more information on the CT learning pathways? I mean, I, I know we've been talking about industrial arts, um, is that, is that on the, um, horizon there?
So what we're, what we're going to do as a part of it is, one, have an understanding of what programs are our students, uh, accessing through, uh, through Bosse's coursework? What are, uh, learning opportunities that students don't, uh, or are unable to fit into their schedule or have access to? What are areas of study that, uh, they would like, they would like to pursue, but we don't have, or Bosse's doesn't have those opportunities? How do individual school districts do it? What does it cost to make it happen? So I would say it's not limited to only the notion of industrial arts. That's certainly been something that we've been talking a lot about, um, but this is really about having an understanding of what's going to help support our students, um, what doesn't exist already, and where can we innovate? And what's going to move them forward into really what are, uh, trade fields of the future?
Can we, and I'm glad you mentioned that last phrase, can we add to that analysis the New York State Department of Labor, um, uh, the, the demand analysis that they have? For example, they have, uh, believe carpenters and plumbers, they have a high demand in their, in their projection.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to look at this from multiple, multiple data sources. So, uh, again, we want to see what is it that our, our students are saying? Where does that compare with, you know, other data sources? Department of Labor is a great one. What are the jobs of the future? I mean, that's really what we need to be thinking about. And do, do they exist already? And if they are, again, for all of us, we're about preparing our students for careers that haven't been thought of yet. And so what are the skill sets that it takes to do that? I mean, we want to talk about 21st century learning and the notion of critical thinkers, creative and problem solvers. We've got to be able to prepare our students that, you know, there are unknown careers on the horizon. And this, so this is about, you know, exploring what's the short term? And then again, how does that complement what's the, the, really the big picture? And what's our overall, you know, overarching goal, our, our, our high, our higher order purpose, uh, as being educators and for our students in Beacon?
I think what you said is very true about preparing for jobs that aren't even invented yet and trying to keep ahead of the curve on jobs that are disappearing. It's very obvious that a lot of jobs are in decline and others that are in, in rising demand are sometimes a little harder to spot. So for example, if you came into Beacon 20 years ago and you used the word, um, Pilates, nobody would have understood what you were talking about. But it's actually out there now. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it right. But, um, I think that, uh, this is a very good initiative and I'm very pleased to see that it's underway. When you talk about gathering the stakeholders, it'd be good if we had a little more, uh, discussion about how we go about doing that and how do we reach out to the community and what communities do we reach out to? There are some that probably know more about this than others, obviously the people in Bosse's, but, uh, also people out in the, uh, the world of business and trades, uh, keep their ears pretty close to the ground on these things.
So my question, uh, so my question is related to AIS, sorry. So I see that the sixth grade curriculum is now tying itself to support the students, I guess, in their regular classrooms. Um, and I think we're trying to get there with seventh and eighth grade.
Yes.
So, um, without a current structure in place, are the teachers actually working in AIS rooms, working with the teachers outside to kind of coordinate the, the learning so that AIS really serves as support for them in the classroom? And I only speak to this because, you know, my experience with it was that my son was learning something totally different from what was happening in the classroom, so there was no correlation. So it really wasn't supporting him to be in that class, so to speak, but I know it has developed over time. So I just wanted to know, even though there's nothing structured in the other grades, is there some coordination that's happening to support the student with the extra support?
Well, good question. Um, what, what we've done this year is we're looking at the needs of the, the students in the AIS program. And so we've, uh, we've, the, the, the materials, the resources that we're using have been put in place based on their needs. So it's not necessarily to help students, um, with the curriculum that they're, that they're learning, but more so the needs or, or the lack of skills, right? You know, where, where, where the deficits are, you know, in terms of their skills. So, and I think that's more important because if we develop those skills, then they'll be able to, you know, do well in, in, in all those classes that they're struggling in.
Any other questions? Yeah, what about, um, the after-school activities and how they tie into this in the curriculum? I mean, are we, I know we, one time we were talking about looking at the after-school activities and making sure, you know, see what's, that they're well attended and how well attended with the needs are. Is that also part of the analysis?
Uh, that, that's actually a work in progress, um, and we don't have a particular detailed information to share at this point in time, but we're, um, getting that from the principals and we'll be putting it together in a summary format across, across all of our schools, elementary, uh, through, through high school, for activity participation.
I just have, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, the computer science course that started last year at high school under the grant, that's continuing? Or how, how does that work?
Yeah, so, uh, that's the, and thank you for, because I didn't specifically, uh, talk about some of the, some of the new partnerships that we've, uh, we've delved in over the, over the past year. Um, we have a partnership with Microsoft for, uh, what's called the Teal's Grant. Um, and so we, that allowed us to work, uh, as a classroom teacher using the curriculum that they have vetted through, um, through, uh, the state of Washington, uh, University of Washington specifically around computer science. Um, we began that with, uh, Computer Science One and Computer Science Two, which are half-year courses. We put in an application. We have an upcoming meeting, um, with the, with the grant, uh, facilitators, um, and we'll be discussing, uh, our proposal to continue and expand the work. Remember, from a year ago, we talked about getting, uh, Computer Science as an elective started at the high school, uh, with an overarching goal that within a two to three-year period, that would lead us to the ability to offer AP Computer Science for those students who may be interested. What's really exciting about it, um, is that in the Computer Science Two course, uh, our students that, um, that built, that, that continued on from the fall semester into the spring semester, um, are actually, um, learning, uh, some of the Python code, which is on the, the front, you know, really on the front edge of, uh, computer coding, uh, language. And so there's some nice opportunities for students. And we're looking to continue to offer those courses to build up a base, and that will hopefully continue to feed into what could be, uh, an AP Computer Science program.
So do you, do you not know, though, if they will be offered in the fall? Is this dependent on the grant?
Computer Science One and Two definitely will be offered in the fall. But, uh, we're waiting for, uh, confirmation, if you will, uh, from Microsoft that will, that we're being awarded the grant to continue to build, uh, into the next level of computer science work for a new course, if you will.
Uh-huh. And if we're not, is there professional development that we could pay a teacher to do to, to keep?
Yeah, we could, we could seek other options. The benefit of doing the partnership with Microsoft is that the curriculum is there and it allows the teacher to have the, the consultation support, um, by professionals in the field of computer science and engineering as they're learning the, learning the curriculum.
And do you know when you'll?
I'm hoping within a week. We have that meeting.
Because the students are signing up now for their fall classes, right? Is that how it works?
Yes, they're putting in their, their course, uh, request and that, yeah.
But there's nothing listed as, in terms of like a Computer Science Three?
No, I mean, I, I, we'll, we'll talk more at the implementation meeting next week and I can give you guys an update af- after that. Yeah, but I'm, I'm hopeful. I mean, the, our students, our teachers and our consultants have been very positive about the work this year, um, but I, I don't want to prematurely say we got it, but I'll, I'll wait for that implementation meeting.
Any other questions? So I just had two. So with the reading piece, I know that you've implemented the Fanta's panel and the benchmarking piece to assess where the students are at and so forth.
Yes.
How do you go about mimicking that for the math to get the progress monitoring for the reading as well as the math on a systemic basis to target the instruction or the skills that the students are, um, lacking or not making progress in?
So, a couple of things. One, one of the main things that, um, that I'm looking to do differently for next year is that I want to work with the principals. Uh, we have, uh, we have some spreadsheets that we use and, um, I, for ELA, and I want to put them out for math as well so that they're tracking, you know, the information from the different assessments from the units that they use for, in the, um, from the math program. That will help us because that will give us some, uh, that will give us some information in terms of how students are doing, um, month by month, or unit by unit. In addition to that, uh, we've been looking at, there have been some teachers piloting some, some, uh, math web-based programs as well. And, uh, the goal is to have them come back, let us know how they're actually working so that we'll see if that's something that we want to go, you know, in the future, if we want to do district-wide.
So the teacher's going to be, like, monitoring like three times a year or on a monthly basis? I know you said monthly, like, to target that instructional piece of where the students are lacking?
It would be, yes, it would be monthly, you know, because, you know, ultimately the difference with math is that, you know, one of the beauties, like, math is so concrete, you can tell right away where students are struggling. The goal is, is to put, um, sensor-based activities in place so that, um, they're always targeting the needs of students as opposed to waiting for just pull-out services that can take place within the classroom.
So besides the AIS classes, when you're monitoring this, what are the ways, do you think we could be creative in providing the service, right? Because especially, you know, at the elementary, we might have a little bit more time, but when you get to the middle school level, they have the periods, right? And so then the content starts to become a little bit more important, but yet they can't access it through reading. How, how would you go about, like, besides the AIS period, making sure that the, the students are getting access to these interventions and/or strategies or?
Right. So what I'll say at the middle school is, one, the difference between the middle and the, and the elementary is that, um, in terms of the middle school, those students that are receiving the AIS services, they get it every other day. So they are, it is frequent, you know, that, they are, they are seeing an intervention teach frequently. And so one of the things that I did as a pilot with one of our, uh, AIS teachers is that, um, I looked at different materials that could be used because I think what was happening was that, um, we were just providing more support on, um, the curriculum where we need to maybe go back to see where some of the struggles are. So I provided like some assessments that could be used, assessments at earlier grades to see if the struggle was at, you know, um, or in a standard that was at an earlier grade. And that seemed to have worked because now you can actually pinpoint what the need is and then put the service in place to, to match the needs. So that's one of the things that I want to do, uh, across the board at the middle school for all the teachers that are working in AIS, um, uh, who are, who are conducting AIS math. I want to put, put an assessment in place that they can use. I'm not sure if it's going to be, uh, something such as NWEA or something like that because I don't know if we have. I don't think we have the, uh, I'm not sure if we can, if, if that's the route we want to go right now, but at least an assessment at the beginning of the year so that they can, they can see what the needs are of the students.
And I want to commend you guys both on what you've done with the K-three base with the reading part, and now I think that it's getting more up to the middle school level. I just think that there needs to be a little bit more to the.
Absolutely, yes, yep, thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I ask one last?
Sure.
Do, um, are, is the Clarkson University-CAM collaboration happening again this summer or?
I believe so, yes, uh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, you finish that, Nolan.
Um, I just, I spoke recently with, uh, the teacher that was involved in a project last year and she told me that they have asked her to once again join them, you know, collaborate with them. So I, I think it's all systems go, but I have to find out, is it just going to be something that's just exclusive to Beacon again, or is it going to be opened up to, you know, some of the neighboring districts?
Some of that has to do with the funding source for them. Um, why we're excited about this is, um, through Beacon Institute, um, which is an affiliate, um, and a field, a field-based site for Clarkson University. They, they came, uh, Asher Peck, who's, uh, part of the outreach, uh, coordination here in Beacon, uh, came, came to Eric and I, uh, over the course of the last couple of months with a series of proposals, one of them being the Summer Institute for our middle school students, um, another being a potential funding source, um, that they were working on to secure that would allow for, um, funding for some of their, uh, university professors to be able to do some ongoing professional development work, uh, here for us in Beacon. Um, another outreach, um, another, another avenue is, um, some new, um, some new, uh, classroom enrichment, uh, field trip, uh, and classroom supplemental, uh, learning opportunities available through next year for, at an elementary level. Um, and then the fourth area being, um, this proposal for a math-science, uh, partnership grant. Originally, we were going to, and we had agreed to be, um, a, a participating school district member of what was expected to be a consortium. That's the way they've done, uh, that funding proposal in the past. The state changed the requirements on that. We learned that late in the game, so they've, the, uh, the, the grant, uh, the competitive grant, uh, under Title II Part B was put out like in March, had an April 6 filing date. Um, what was it, the week of spring break? Uh, as we were reading further into it, uh, into the proposed, into the specifications of the proposal, it was very clear consortium work wasn't allowed. Um, we got in contact with them. We said if they were willing partner, we'd be willing to write for our own grant. And so that's what, that's what we did and submitted. What was, what's exciting about it is there's been lots of dialogue. Our teachers, our science department has been very involved and really has helped design what this, if we get the funding for it, what this professional development delivery model will look like. And it has both a teacher and a leadership capacity. Um, those were requirements of the grant, so it requires a minimum of 45 hours of professional development support for teachers. Um, we've put forward a proposal around interdisciplinary work, as I said, across, use, the use of mathematical modeling across disciplines. Um, so it'll, it will allow for interdisciplinary teams, uh, to come together, which really supports what our middle school philosophy is of, of working together as disciplined teams. And, um, it will, it also has a component that supports the administrative, uh, the administrative, uh, professional development. So it's a, it's not a big ticket, you know, dollar amount of a grant, it's just a little, uh, little under $120,000 is what we wrote for. We'll see how, how much of a, of a competitive bidder we are i- in terms of the requirements of, you know, um, priority or focus school status. But either way, we've designed something that will look for other funding sources to do. But it, it's a nice example of the many types of partnerships that we've had, uh, going on and putting in place, and we could kind of go on and list them. I mean, we were doing work at the elementary level with, uh, Clear, with, uh, Clearwater Sloop. Um, we've, we're doing work, as you, as you know, the ongoing work that, that with the support of the Beacon Arts and Ed Foundation, uh, and the various project, uh, work that, that, that you all as a foundation support. Um, we're doing, you know, and expanding and continuing the work with Hudson Valley Seed and, uh, Common Ground Farm. But we're also connecting with some, with some new community, uh, partnerships, and that's exciting work because that, again, leads into ways to innovate and, and to feed.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Anne Rea?
All right. Uh, we just wanted to take a few minutes to review some of the positions that are in the budget. Anne Rea's going to talk about, uh, some of the financial aspects of the budget that we are recommending, and then we'll. All right. We just wanted to take a few minutes to review some of the positions that are in the budget. Anne Marie is going to talk about some of the financial aspects of the budget that we are recommending. And then we'll end with, in addition to the security side of things, or at least an idea about something to do there. So just really quickly, Celia and Eric did a great job. Oh, if the board wants to look, we emailed this to you. It didn't get in board docs, so we emailed it to you just a little while ago. Celia and Eric did a great job summarizing all the work. I think that's a really great statement of what our budget represents for next year. I think these positions are another great statement, just to review. We had our elementary principals come a few meetings ago. They talked about the need for further class size reductions. We did several in this current year's budget that we're in right now. I think they made a huge difference. We think these three more, one at Sargent, one at South Avenue, one at Glennam, will further that work. I think it's, it's an important step for the district to keep taking regarding elementary class size. It's something that the community, I think, really supports, something elementary parents really support. But it's also something, I think, it's one of those great, it's one of those great budget items that really impacts all the students in a positive way and the staff. It allows a teacher to differentiate more easily. It allows a teacher to meet the needs of the students in the class when there's fewer. I know these things are kind of obvious statements, but, but I think it's, it's important. We talk about budgets being a representation of the things we believe in as a district. And I think having smaller class sizes at the elementary level is certainly one that we're recommending. The two elementary PE teachers, you know, we, I've been a part of the wellness committee this year. And even though there is this state minutes requirement that we're currently not meeting as well as we should, I think another way of looking at it beyond the state is from a wellness perspective. And having these two additional PE teachers at the elementary level would mean a fifty percent increase in the amount of physical education that elementary students receive. And that would have a huge impact. It would enable us also to have a really solid elementary special schedule for every special we offer. It would allow us to do a four-day rotation. Just to review two of those days would be elementary or would be PE. One would be music, one would be art. And then library media would be something that students go outside of that rotation. We're not cutting library media. Students would be able to, or would be going to library media at the same rate they're going now, but they'd be going with their classroom teacher as well. It would allow the library media teachers to have a more flexible learning environment and do some of the technology things that Celia was talking about, some of the makerspace things. So we feel like in an interesting sort of way, adding two PE teachers has a really powerful impact in, you know, in things beyond PE. It's, I've mentioned in prior meetings, it's a schedule that I've used in two previous districts I've been a part of. One is a principal for a long time and then in Ithaca for the last five years. And I think it will have a really positive impact on our elementary students. With the additional state aid that we received, we now can incorporate that into our budget recommendation for this upcoming year. Special education or certified occupational therapist assistant. We're saying or because we're allowing Dawn to really evaluate over the next few weeks, you know, where she really needs that position. And we're, you know, we're hoping that we can do it where we don't need an additional special ed teacher, where we can do the Coda. But if we need to, we wanted to provide that flexibility. And then, and then security. So we, I've mentioned in previous meetings, we have this through a coaster. A really cost-efficient contract with Alteris Consulting Group. They consult many districts in this area on security. They are in the midst of doing a couple of things with us. They are, they finished the building, they finished being on-site for the building security audits. They are finishing the reports. These reports are very, very detailed. And I obviously think that they have probably been slammed the last couple of months from a lot of districts sort of contracting with them. So we're hoping to get the audits this week. They'll be shared with the board when we receive them. And I've said we'll share in public the parts that we can share with the public regarding that. But the other thing that's happening right now with Alteris is each building emergency response team is receiving a six-hour training in which they'll focus on, you know, the six key aspects of a building plan. And, you know, when we did the background on the company, one of the things that several districts said was their training is phenomenal. So that training will be starting in the next couple of weeks. And each six, each of our six schools will have many key people in the school attend that training. At the end of the financial part, I'm going to talk about, in addition to the security, the personnel part, or just some thinking about it right now with the board. But first, we wanted to talk about some updated financial information from Anne Marie.
Thanks. So again, I apologize that it's small. I'm hoping that you can see it a little bit better on your computer. But these are the final numbers on, on the revenue side. So we did receive an extra a hundred and forty thousand dollars in the final budget run, so, which was great news. And we had talked about what if we were going to get that money and we had Dr. Lindau had talked about the PE teachers. So the important part on this is our total budget is being increased by two point seven six percent or one point eight million dollars, almost one point nine. That is, this, this presentation is having the levy be at our max, which is three point eight seven percent. And I'll get into a little bit more of that. So this is just the revenue side of the budget. In board docs, you received all of the expenditure side, budget by budget line, just so that you can see where the money was being allocated. Just a major factor we thought we'd share, obviously, you know that being in a school district, mainly, the major expense is to salary and benefits. So our increases to salary and benefits is one point seven million dollars. And this, again, the salary and benefits are approximately seventy-four percent of the total budget. So on the, on the slide before that, we saw that we were going to increase the budget by one point eight million, budget to budget, one point seven is just salary and benefits. So it kind of gives you a little bit of perspective. And I just kind of wanted to show for, for this purpose of kind of where the increases are. Again, salary increases of about nine hundred and seventy thousand. That includes about three hundred and eighty thousand for the six additional teaching positions. Increasing to benefits, health insurance, retirement, FICA, if you have salary increases, you obviously have more social security. It's about seven hundred and ninety thousand. Principal and interest increase, we have about a hundred thousand dollars this year. And the additional security, we allocated about fifty thousand dollars and Dr. Lindau will talk about that a little bit more. So looking at the bottom, it's one point nine million dollars just on those four areas. And we just talked about one point eight. So obviously, it's a give and take. So there's some areas in there that we reduced and we were able to reduce to kind of make the budget balanced. I know that you had asked at the last board meeting to talk about a tax increase, so I wanted to give you that. And I want to start by saying that we're using the current assessments because the assessments, we do not receive in the district until the summer. So this is, this, as I look at it, worst-case scenario, and I'll talk about this in a second, but this is where we are. If all the assessments made exactly the same across homestead and non-homestead, these would be the increases across for this budget. So a hundred and sixty per year for Beacon, one ninety-nine for Fishkill, one ninety-seven for Wapanders, and that's per year. And the reason I said it that way was I wanted to show you a slide of the changes in assessments last year. And I will present this again in the summer when we do the warrant. I thought this was important because this was last year's percent increase. And so last year's budget, we did the same thing around this time of year and we talked about what the increase would be. And then the assessments went up and actually the tax rate reduced when we actually calculated it. So I've reached out to the city and the towns of Fishkill and Wapanders to see if I can get a preliminary. It's difficult for them because they're compiling the information. So you know, being an accountant, I always go with worst-case scenario because then, then you can only go up from there. So that's why those numbers were probably worst-case scenario of what the increase would be. But I wanted to show you here, I know at least in the city of Beacon and maybe not as much in Fishkill, but they're thinking around the same percentage. So that will help with the increase and it won't be as high as we just mentioned.
So I wanted to just talk about some thinking regarding school security in terms of personnel. So when we were putting, you know, sort of the last touches on the budget, we've been, you know, doing a lot of processing the last couple of months, especially regarding security. And I think we've made some really, we've made some really great advances working with Alteris already. And I will say we have principals and staff at each building that have taken this really seriously for years. So I never saw it as a weakness, but it's always something that we could work on improving. And, you know, I would think any district can say that. So that being said, one of the things I've been seeing, just both when I'm sort of assessing my own job performance and also looking at the leaders, other leaders in our building, is I think, you know, the main thing that we need to be leading is the learning in the district. We should all be instructional leaders. You know, that, I get reminded of that on a daily basis. And we, you know, it needs to be beyond the job of Celia and Eric. I need to, you know, I need to be the instructional leader, an instructional leader in the district. Our principals need to be. And so I always think about ways, being a longtime principal before, before, you know, advancing my career. I always try to think of ways where we can support principals in the building. And with some of the things that we've been dealing with this year and with, you know, districts across the country we've been dealing with, it's led me to think that we could add a position that could really assist with this. And so we did some research with civil service and there's a job title called Director of School Security. And so it's something that, you know, I don't necessarily, we're putting it out as an idea. When you're adopting a budget, you're adopting, you know, the monetary amount. So this could be something that has further discussion down the line. It's not something that needs to be like acted on immediately. But I think this is an area where you could, where we could use support and where it'd free us up to be more instructional leaders instead of always focusing on this side of things. Not that it's not important, but that there are other people who could help us do this. So this director, this potential director position would be training all staff, you know, administrators and all the other staff in the plans that we do, dealing with emergencies, those kinds of things. Would be a liaison with local law enforcement and with Alteris Consulting. You know, we, we love working with local law enforcement, but having one point of contact, I think, would be really powerful for us as a district and I think would help streamline communication. Alteris is wonderful, but they're in constant communication with us. And again, having one person really assist with that communication would help. Someone who co-supervises, the reason I say co-supervise is I still would want principals supervising our building security staff as well. They know their buildings really well. They are trained in dealing with complaints. They're trained in dealing with sort of the interpersonal things that come up in a school building. And so I want principals to still maintain that supervision, but I would like this person to, to help with the supervision. This person would review our emergency response planning that we have, both district plans and building plans. And then would work closely with principals to do that. There's a lot of other stuff this, this person would help with. We have, you know, lots of evening activities. We're always trying to coordinate, like who's covering these evening activities from the security standpoint. Oftentimes, that ends up being one of us doing, like trying to figure out how that coverage works. In this world, this director would do that. You know, so that, that sort of have that management side of things in terms of where people are and all of that. And we think this would be a ten-month position, so that's why it's a little bit more cost-effective as well. We think we could do it within that fifty thousand. And, and we also would be proposing, if we decided to move forward with this, that it would just be a year position and then we would reevaluate at the end. We can do that. With a position like this, do we, do we still need this? Is this meeting our needs? So, so this is, this is, this would be my recommendation right now. I would have to put out there that that same amount would also help pay for an SRO. And, you know, as you know, the city's offer is still out there that they would pay half of the cost of an SRO and the district would pay half of that cost as well. So, you know, the last couple of months especially, we've, we've leaned on the Beacon Police Department quite a bit with just their help with things that have come up. We've also asked them to be stationed in our buildings, not just checking in, but actually stationed in our buildings quite a bit, especially during the month of March. That was really in response to like, you know, a specific threat that we were worried about. It was more to help build a sense of safety with, you know, with things that are happening both here, Dutchess County and across the country. And, you know, I went to a city council meeting a few weeks ago to thank Chief Ginjulis and, and, you know, his team for, for being so open and helping out whenever we asked for it. I've also, you know, gone on record by saying I've had good experiences with SROs in the past. And that, you know, when we talked about this, whenever it was, eight or nine months ago, that I wanted to have a start sort of going forward and at least thinking about it. Right now, I feel like that position would be a divisive one in the community. There's a lot of folks who, they'll think it'd be a great idea and a lot of, a lot of folks who think it's not a great idea. They think having law enforcement directly in our schools, you know, that, that it causes issues that go beyond school safety. So, so it's, it's been a struggle for me. And so, but I don't want to, I don't want to sort of, I don't want to hold back, you know, furthering the security of our buildings by sort of stalling on that conversation, you know? Like I, and so, so I, I'm sort of, not sort of, I'm pulling back on that. And my recommendation would be to do this director of school security. I think that person would really help us do all the things that I just laid out. And, and I think it could really benefit, especially us administrators, focus on everything we're supposed to do. And not just one thing, which seems like at times it can be rather dominant. You know, there's a key designation in, in the state lexicon and it's the District Chief Emergency Officer. That's me. That would still be me. I'm the person who closes schools. I'm the person who, you know, ultimately directs the Beacon Police Department to be a part of a building. Or that night, you know, a month and a week ago where we had, you know, K-9 teams sweeping our buildings because of a threat that was written down. That, that's still me. This person would help me do those things. This person would help our principals too. This director's position would report directly to me. And so I would be in close supervision of this person and I think it would help move us along from a security standpoint. What I don't want to do is I don't, I, I certainly want this to be a public discussion with the board. And I'm willing to go wherever the board wants to go with this. The reason why we're putting this idea forward right now, but also mentioning SRO is I didn't want to seem like I'm trying to hide something or that I'm trying to sort of, you know, do a bait and switch or something like that. This is my latest thinking. And I also wanted to put it out there because I didn't want, I didn't want, I think, a really good budget process where we have a lot of great work moving forward. I didn't want to get bogged down on one aspect of the budget and have like, you know, our budget conversation just sort of be focused on a fifty thousand dollar outlay. It is my recommendation to increase it by that. I'm open to suggestions from the board if we wanted to do something else with that. It's something, you know, I've spent a lot of time thinking about. I think having it be a year position, if we go with the director of school security, allows us to reevaluate any year whether we want to continue with that, whether we wanted to do SRO, you know, or go in a different direction. So it doesn't sort of box us in, maybe like some other positions created do, do box us in. So that is my thinking. This has obviously been a rather dominant thing for me. And so I've really been focused on this last couple of months and I think this position would really help all of us. You know, I think this possibly could be like a retired law enforcement person. I think those would be the people who'd be applying to something like this. In the state budget, the state senate put forward a proposal that retired, retired law enforcement wouldn't have the sort of salary cap, you know, that, that retired folks in New York do. Didn't end up being part of the final budget, so, so that didn't get acted on. We were kind of waiting to see if that, because that would help us recruit somebody for this position. But it does appear to be a thing that the state is going to move on possibly faster than next year because a lot of districts are asking about it. I will also add, I went to the, you know, the Duchess Superintendent meeting the other day. It looks like, this isn't definite, but it looks like almost every other district in Duchess, if not every other district in Duchess, is moving to an SRO or having some sort of SRO. But many of those schools, I should add, do not have the security staff that we do. In fact, many of those districts have no security staff whatsoever. So in, in many ways, this director of school security position would help us really coordinate that school security staff we have. I don't think there's been a lot of central coordination around that position. That still would come from me and it'd still come from Anne Marie and it'd still come from the principals. But having this position would be sort of a key link to get some common practices going amongst those individuals. How many do we have stationed in our six buildings? I know, I should know this offhand.
We should.
Four at the elementary level, four at the middle and seven at the high school. So that's. So that's 15. So this person would be really helping get 15 people on the same page. These are all good folks. They care about our kids, they care about our staff, so it's not a deficit battle sort of thing, but we think this position would help get us coordinated and also help evaluate over the course of the year where we may need to go if we feel like we need to shift. So, I wanted this to be a public conversation, so I kind of turned that part or any other part of our presentation over to you all.
One thing that I think is really interesting about this proposal is that if we're spending the money for this audit and then getting this level of detail, I think that it does create kind of a management structure for implementing that plan or creating a plan and implementing and I, I think just, you know, hearing you talk about being the Chief Emergency Officer, it makes me realize that person in our district has changed many times over the last several years, so there probably hasn't been any cohesion. And so it would be really helpful to have somebody kind of really dedicated to think about what's been happening, what, and I also think that, you know, I just, my mind goes to if they can have a more holistic approach about, you know, overall school safety, because I know we all are very narrowly focused on one issue right now, but safety is a variety of
Sure.
Things within a school.
For sure.
And I think that one of the, you know, factors is what I think each of us who are parents have kids at different schools at different times. And so, you know, having, having different approaches to, you know, there's, it feels like there's a building-to-building approach that's really ad hoc and it would be kind of, I think, probably safer and more reassuring to feel that continuity
Yeah. And we've seen some coming together just in the last couple of months with both Altaris and just conversations at the administrative team level. I've been in other districts that have done audits, not with Altaris, but with other consultants. The, the audits are incredibly detailed. We'll obviously be poring through them as an administrative team, but you're right, having someone whose job is focusing on those details would be an assistance, for sure.
I just, I'm sorry to, as far as, is it, it's a civil service position, but is it something that requires an exam or is it just qualification?
It's not.
No, it's non-competitive.
Okay.
Another, I think, point for that, in my mind, is that the, given that Glennon is not part of Beacon, the SRO position is not going to cover Glennon, is that true?
It's not through jurisdiction, so yeah.
Right. And so with the Director of Security, that would be someone who would be coordinating with Glennon obviously as well, so.
Yes, and Courtney Matana-Fishkill, PD, there, you know, and beyond law enforcement. I mean, there's other, obviously other emergency responders. We, you know, our fire chief is a part of our team. We're trying to add more of our emergency responders.
Are our social workers part of our team?
That's one of the things that I, like, is that something that we?
They're at the building level.
On the building level.
Yeah, they're at the building level.
I think that that's the other thing too. I mean, I know early in my, one of my children being in school, there was an issue with a non-custodial parent. I mean, people don't think of that, but something came, it was, and then there was a whole process that had to play out and I think that, I remember the social worker kind of taking the point on that, but that was another element of security that unless you're in a building, you don't really know what happens.
I should mention also that with the security staff, we have, three of them have the title Senior Security Monitor. And so, you know, they have a few of those, you know, like, a little bit of this under the Senior Security Monitor title, but they still have kind of their regular job of doing what a security monitor does. So this year, we've asked a few of our senior security monitors to get more involved in training the staff. So we've already kind of started to do some of this. Two of them were trained and handled with CARE, which is a, you know, de-escalation program. They've been training teams at all of our buildings, more, we have more staff asking for the training. So, so we're starting to tap into, you know, our leadership at, at that level already, but this would be kind of like another step. So I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that, like, and, and the people who have that title, you know, they, rightfully so, take their experience really seriously and want to share it with us and so they're also a part of our district team, along with their building teams too. Anytime there's an Altaris training, this director would be at all of those trainings, you know, like, just kind of helping, because once Altaris leaves, I mean, they're always a phone call away, but they do leave and we have, it'd be helpful to have someone on the ground to really keep it moving forward too.
I was gonna say, I think having a Director of Security on our own staff is helpful, very helpful. And it also helps that, not only that this person would be primarily for keeping our students safe, but also can more easily integrate into what we do here. You know, I know we're trying to start a restorative program and, you know, there are other school state rules that the schools follow to protect children, you know, their rights, which is appeals and all that stuff. So I feel that someone in-house is much better than someone out of-house.
I'd like to offer a little bit of analysis on what I consider to be the three areas of security, and one of them tends to get overlooked. We've been talking about training your staff and I support your initiative here. I think it's a good one and it's shaping up nicely. I would add another line at the bottom though, about helps train students in emergency response. And that is the second area, and that is training of students is a key part of security. We do that, but I think we probably have some steps forward to go and that this program here would certainly help with that and make it more advanced. The third one, not to spend any time on it, but it's basically physical security, that is the nature of the buildings and how resilient they are to repelling attacks. Now, on the, the question of student training, I recently became aware that the Beacon Volunteer Ambulance Corps has a program called Stop the Bleed.
Yeah.
And Mr. Tsang is an active member of EVAC and could probably help you on this. I think it's Deborah Torres is the leader of that project, as an advocate.
I know Deb Cortez is already contacted.
Yeah, I've met with them. The only issue, it's, it seems like a great program, the only issue was, our meeting was kind of right two days before our last professional learning day and we couldn't just sort of throw it in. So we're actually thinking of adding it to either the one before the school year starts so we can just get a whole bunch of staff or the first one into the school year, because otherwise doing it piecemeal across the schools, it ends up kind of taking a year to do it. So, so yeah, I'm aware of that program. Yeah, you probably are seeing it more in the news, like, it's really getting a lot of traction. I've been seeing it in newspapers and on disc clips and things like that, so, so yeah, I've been in communication with her about it and we had a good meeting about it too.
Good. I think it's important, if you stop to think about it, this gets a little bloody here, but if there is a school attack, emergency services may not be able to get in to help because they might be getting shot up too. So the first aid that may need, be needed or available is going to come from people inside the building.
Yeah.
I'll be good at that.
Yeah. I, I just want to say the one thing, Craig, is we, you know, we're eagerly, we're eagerly awaiting these audits because we feel like beyond behavioral changes, they're going to have some recommendations about our building facilities as well. So we've been talking about, we're, we're kind of carving some, some space into Anthony DiMatto's budget to deal with some things. We'll talk about it facilities once we get the audit, because we know there's going to be some things. I mean, one of the things they look at immediately is signage, like, is your signage clear? Is it consistent? Is it consistent across six buildings? I can say right now, that's, that's going to come up, because it's not for us and that's, that's kind of a low, you know, that's like a easy one, but they're gonna, they're gonna have some other ones too. They've already talked to me about some doors that need the, you know, the automatic entry access that we don't have right now. So these are things I'm sure staff and parents, you know, have been noticing over the last year or two. So there's going to be some physical changes we need to make. We don't, you know, we want this part of this just to be towards personnel, but then we've been talking, we've been talking about this for the last couple of months, like, how do we, how do we have some space to deal with things that will come up from these audits, because we know they're coming.
So I just, I just wanted to get some clarity. So the Director of School Security position will possibly be developed and then in a year, it's only going to be for a year, and then in a year it'll be reassessed whether or not it will remain the Director of School Security or may possibly convert to an SRO, like what?
No, it's, it's, well, yes, it's a
We could set it up as a year to year.
We could set, we were thinking of setting it up as a year to year just to see if it's meeting our needs. I'm, I'm not trying to set this up as like this is our way of easing into an SRO. I'm simply trying to give us that flexibility that if, like, we feel like we need it, and I mean we, that we have that flexibility. So it's, it's, but yes, we, we were thinking of setting it up as a year to year thing, for now.
Because I mean, I'm one of the persons that have, I have some concerns with, with the SRO, but only due to my specific concerns and I think that as a district, I think that we are dealing with or trying to address some of the issues and concerns that I have that may be the concerns of parents that are not as vocal as those people who want to tell us what the differences are and why they think that safety is first, when I think that safety is first. And I think everybody considers safety regardless of where their kids are in the building, because I think that all children are adversely affected when something happens in any of the six buildings
Yeah.
That exist in a district. So I, I just want to be sure where, where this is, where this is gonna go. I don't want any surprises.
I think what, for the year-to-year appointment that Dr. Leno was talking about is if you created it and just appointed and you didn't say it was a year-to-year appointment, then to not have that position, you'd have to abolish it and then if the person was in that, when you abolish it, they'd have first rights if it came back on and the district wanted to do something. So once a year-to-year appointment, you could assess it, the need and the want on a year-to-year piece.
I understood that. I just wanted to make sure publicly that what I was thinking was what you were saying by telling that.
You know, I just want to ask, you know, safety, it, it isn't just, it doesn't have to come, the, the threat of safety does not come from, come from, I don't know. So, I mean, I, I'd like, I like, I like the fact that we're invested into a more broader position as well.
So we have limitations on some of the, so I think in your board docs, you have the job description. So civil service is very concrete, sequential, so for this position, that's a position, you know, I mean, we can't just create a position. I understand your concerns, but we, they're a little bit more rigid in their thinking. So when we pulled this job description, it actually covered a lot of the things that we were talking about, so we were very excited about that. To go a little bit further may take a little bit more of a leap, so we're kind of focusing, you know, on what's there.
Yeah, and that's something maybe you could, could abolish.
Well, also I think it's, it's actually built into the structure, which is this would be a co-supervisor of security, the, the principals would be part of that. So as far as the piece that you're talking about, you know, they would be bringing that to the table. They would be charged to bring that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want to be sure that we're not taking the supervision ability of a principal away from key people in their building who interact with lots of students and, and public and parents. So, so that's why, you know, I know it's a little shift from the description, but I don't think that would be an issue.
No.
But that's why I want to make sure principals aren't like, oh, I don't, I don't deal with this anymore. It's like, no, you still, this is still a huge part of your job, it's just now you're getting support to do it.
And will any of the senior security officers be eligible to transition into this or is there be a risk for them to do?
They'd have to meet, there's three, on the job description, there's three different paragraphs, so it's like an and or. So they'd have to meet the requirements, otherwise they wouldn't be considered for civil service. If they do meet the requirements, then they can be qualified for it.
Any other questions?
Thanks for all the thought and time that you put into this. It's a really tricky situation to manage and I think you struck a really good balance.
I think it was very creative. Thanks.
Thanks.
Any, Noah, guys have anything that you want to add to that? I'd have to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no problem. When we were just talking, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, we had a lockdown drill that was 15 seconds before the bill. But we were just talking, the lockdown drill was announced to us two days before it happened and also 15 seconds before the bill, students were pretty much to their classes where they would be in that time and they were also ready for it. And a lot of students were talking about an unannounced drill happening two minutes before class, because then you're in the hallway and have to make that decision instead of being in your class where you're going to be already and the teachers know it's happening, you know it's happening, so you're by the door anyway, just waiting for the drill to happen. Then you don't really have to think about it, it's just like a normal drill.
Good idea. All right, so reviewing the agenda, we do have one correction on 11.04, the Instructional List, item F, Resolution 040918A. It's a date change. It should say 2020 instead of 2021. It is corrected in the printout. And we also do have an addendum to the agenda and it's going to be item number 12.01 and the resolution number is going to be 040918B. I'm going to ask you to read that for us.
Stipulation of agreement, it is hereby agreed by and among the Beacon City School District, the Beacon Educational Administrators Association and Ms. Cassandra Orsa as follows. One, notwithstanding the January 25, 2018, a random agreement between the district and the association, the parties agree that effective July 1, 2018, Cassandra Orsa shall be placed as Step 6 of the Elementary Principal Salary Schedule. Number two, this agreement is subject to the approval of the Board of Education, dated April 9, 2018.
Great, thank you. Any questions about the addendum? All right. Moving forward with the agenda, we have student or school presentations. Any parent groups?
She's coming.
Laurie, you're coming as student or school or a parent group?
I, I have three, I have three hats, so it's gonna be epic.
So we're gonna go parent group?
Let's go with parent groups. So yeah, three different organizations on part, I'm making announcements for all three, so bear with me. My name's Laurie Murch. I am first gonna talk about the We Play Community Project. I wanted to, you know, it's springtime now, it's busy season for me in fundraising land, so I want to kind of just let you all know what some things are going on in the community and also in schools. So I'm on the board of the We Play Community Project. Basically, if you're not familiar with it, we're a private organization with partners with the city of Beacon and we raise, you know, private funds to create play spaces for Beacon's kids. You know, it's kind of the younger demographic, future Beacon City School District students. And, you know, part of my agenda in working with this group is to kind of foster a spirit of volunteerism that hopefully then carries on as, as kids enter school. So about 15 years ago, the We Play Project built the Totlot Playground at Memorial Park, which is our, you know, kids playground, if you're familiar with it. That was not there before. It was the efforts of, you know, a lot of volunteers raising money. So in the past year, we've actually been working on expansion of the Totlot. We're calling it the We Woods. We just completed Phase 1 of the project. We're now fundraising for Phase 2. We did a Buy a Tree fundraiser where for $100, community members could sponsor the planting of a tree in the forest. And it's basically a natural play space. There's going to be a willow tunnel and we're moving the sandbox over and, you know, just a lot of different things that then will eventually serve older kids, a lot of climbing and nature play, that kind of stuff too. So our main fundraiser is the Replay Sale, so I wanted to announce that. It's a huge kids' tag sale. It's located at the University Settlement Camp, which is off of Route 9D near the Craig House. Last year, we raised over $13,000 in one weekend at the Replay Sale and all of that money goes back into the community. So some of the things we support are the parks and playgrounds in Beacon. We give about $1,000 a year to the Howland Public Library's Children's Programming. We host play groups at the library and at the Beacon Rec Center. We donate $1,000 annually to the Calico Ball. And we plan to donate $1,000 this year to the new skate park that's being planned. I don't know if you guys are, are up on what's going on, it's actually really exciting. Mark Price from the Rec Center and a group of volunteers are putting together this skate park. It's going to be happening in phases and I was told today Phase 1 should be completed in June, which is very exciting. So teenagers will have something to do. Another interesting thing is that all of the lumber and the building materials for this skate park have been donated by a production company in, in the city. They're breaking down a movie set right now that was some kind of like three-story prison set for a Ben Stiller movie. So that wood is gonna now be in our market. So that wood is gonna now be in our market. So that's kind of exciting, and it's a nice use of materials, whereas these production companies are going to just throw that stuff away. So we're taking donations, speaking of not throwing things away, gently used clothes, toys, books, gear, all kids' stuff, all right? So spread the word to you and yours. You can drop your donations at the University Settlement Camp Theater or at the Beacon Rec Center, that's twenty-three West Center Street, or at the Butterfield Library in Cold Spring during their operating hours. This year's sale is Friday, April twenty seventh through Sunday, April twenty ninth, from nine to one. So come check it out. There will also be baked goods and coffee. Okay. All right, next, changing hats, Beacon Arts and Ed Foundation. We wanted to announce we are entering Calico Ball season. Very exciting time for us. The Calico Ball, if you don't know, I know you all do, is a ten-week music and dance residency. It involves every third grader in the district. This year's Calico Ball saved the date. I hope you all will come. You're all invited. It will be Wednesday, June sixth, at the Pete and Toshi Theater here at the high school. It happens in the morning, ten a.m. So I hope you'll all join us in the front row for that, board members. We've been walking, talking with Mr. Wright and Olivia Vaniver about further integrating the Calico Ball, and we kind of mentioned, as was mentioned earlier, into the third grade curriculum. We're excited to be providing just some small support materials this year to facilitate that, so we're in the process of getting that out to the, to the different schools. The Calico Ball is Beacon Arts and Ed's biggest fundraiser. Last year, we raised about fourteen thousand dollars, mostly by selling ad space in our Calico Ball program and obtaining donations from community organizations and individual citizens. That includes all of our elementary PTAs and PTOs. They each, last year gave about a thousand dollars each to the Calico Ball. So this year, since we've grown our board and in that spirit, we are growing our fundraising goals, we're going to be doing our usual fundraiser with the Calico booklet, and we're going to continue to sponsor, to do our social media fundraising, where we offer a sponsor third grader kind of social media campaign. So basically, anybody can pay the cost of one student to participate in the residency, which is only thirty dollars a student. So if you want to sponsor a, a third grader or make a donation, you can go to our website and donate directly from there, beaconartsandeducation.org. BeaconArtsAndEducation.org, okay. Next, we're very excited to announce that, okay, that Beacon Arts and Ed is going to be fully funding a field trip for every seventh grader to go take a tour of Bannerman's Island. This request was submitted to us by Angie Winkelman and Chrissy Holliday of the English Department at Rombout Middle School, and we're very encouraged by their request and really happy to support the trip. I'll be submitting a check for payment for this in full. It's about thirty-two hundred dollars. We're getting that check out right now. I'll bring it over to the district office this week. So we're really excited about that. You know, Anna and I had put out these funding request forms a little earlier in the year, and we're starting to see that stuff come back to us, which is really great, especially in a department other than art or music, you know, because we'd love to sort of, you know, bring the arts into every subject matter and, you know, try to, try to just support any new ideas that, that faculty have. So that's been really, really encouraging. Excited about that. And that trip is, I should have, I should have mentioned the date. It's in May, it's in May. They're taking actually three separate trips to make sure all the students go. And that was, that's every student in, in the seventh grade. So that's it for Beacon Arts and Ed, and now on Sergeant PTO. You ready for the Sergeant brag, right? A monthly Sergeant brag, okay? Spring is here, the seeds we've been planting over at Sergeant are starting to grow, and that's the truth. We set out this year to make, we had some goals this year that we set out to achieve. We wanted to make PTO events fun for both kids and their parents, not just for the kids. We wanted to gain more volunteer help from only, not only moms, but also dads, and, and we wanted to get more teachers to participate in our events, and I'm happy to say we are achieving these goals. So here are a couple of examples. We've been raising a good amount of money with all of our fundraisers, and we're starting to invest those funds back into the school. A couple of things we did just in the last few weeks, we supported our librarian by purchasing a green screen, so now we can begin doing morning announcements via televised video, which is very exciting. We also purchased an egg incubator for Mrs. Anzar's self-contained kindergarten class. All of the kids in the kindergarten wing have been coming by to tour these eggs and are waiting excitedly for them to hatch. Hopefully that happens soon. And yeah, so we've been going like gangbusters on our beautification projects around the school. A group of volunteers painted the entire Sergeant auditorium in the weeks leading up to spring break, and we're now entering the design phase of a mural that we're going to be painting in that space. So that's kind of the hard part, but we're excited to embark on that. This was something we've been wanting to do for three years, so I'm glad to see that come to fruition. You know, Sergeant wasn't built as an elementary school. Our auditorium actually is to be a chapel. What we're trying to do is to create a real auditorium out of the space. We're lucky because we have a separate cafeteria, gymnasium, and auditorium. Not all the schools have that, but we don't have a real stage. It's kind of an altar. It is an altar. We're trying to sort of transform it. Someday, we'd love to purchase a curtain, you know, make it into a really usable space for performances. Next thing you know, we have a school play. So if, if you build it, they will come. That's our, that's our vision here. Also, the gardening committee is working really hard with Hudson Valley Sea to move and expand our current garden. This has been a project that's also been on our wish list for two years, and we're determined to bring this to fruition this spring. We've been working with our head facilities, Mr. D'Amato. He's been doing a lot to help us make this a reality and to do it the right way, which is not always something we're used to doing. We're used to kind of going rogue, to be, truth be told. And he's, I just want to say, I can't really put too fine a point on it. He's really working hard to help us, and we appreciate his efforts. I really think these projects would still be stalled if he wasn't here to facilitate. So shout out to him for that. And the final event, coming this Friday, Rock and Roll Bingo. So after a busy year of achieving our goals, the PTO moms are really tired, and that's why we've handed the reins over to a group of dads to plan our upcoming Family Fun Night, which is happening this Friday, the thirteenth, we're all invited at six-thirty at Sergeant. So what do you get when you have the dads plan? Bingo night is bingo with a live rock band. So there's gonna be a live band. It's kind of an all-star lineup of players from various renowned dad bands that play around Beacon. I heard of them. Rocking guitarists will be supplied by the infamous shredder, Ryan Havers, also known as Ryan Van Havers, also known as Lori's husband. Also, we all know and love Mr. Perez, our wonderful art teacher at Beacon High School, but did you know he's also a kick-ass drummer? Did you know that? Yes, Mr. Perez, along with locally critically acclaimed bassist Harrison Cannon, will complete the power trio known as the Sergeant Peppers, as we call themselves, for this one-night-only event. They will be calling bingo numbers and playing some riffs in between rounds. We promise it won't be too loud. There will be dinner and bake sale items for sale, bingo, of course, raffle prizes. Everyone will walk out a winner. Everyone's welcome. It's a dollar for Sergeant PTO families and three dollars for non-PTO members. We've been seeing some non-Sergeant people at our events. Love that. So please keep coming. So yeah, it's Rock and Roll Bingo, and it's guaranteed to melt your face off or your money back. Just kidding, we're not going to give you your money back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other parent groups? Open to the public. We have one person sign up, Mr. Stark.
I have a copy for each of the board members, since Mr. Zoff is not here. You can give one to Dr. Landau. On March twelfth, I spoke here about a particular coaching position. Two days later, on the fourteenth, I received a text message from that individual. Dear Mrs. Stark, thank you for your concern about my employment. Hopefully I can return the favor someday. I found that to be an inappropriate message. I contacted Dr. Landau with that and gave him a copy of the text. Dr. Landau responded by saying after reviewing the text message, I do not view that as a threat. I feel endangered or in a private business, and I should contact the police. I believe he also said he was going to talk to the teacher. And I, then I responded by saying, asking him if, if I was to understand that this particular teacher's text message wasn't appropriate, if so, please let me know, and that it would bring my concerns to you. As an educator for over forty years, both in classroom and administrator, if I had done that to a taxpayer, I would have lost my job immediately. Dr. Landau's response was that he neither condemned nor condoned his remarks, and that he would speak to him. That was on Thursday, March fifteenth. I responded to Dr. Landau that I think the question to yourself is whether a taxpayer of the district expresses concerns that employee is being paid for a position that does not exist. Is that, is then contacted by that employee trying to intimidate that taxpayer? This is not the first time that an employee and/or representative of the PTA has done this. This was done twice three years ago, where the president of the PTA contacted the employer of a taxpayer in Millbrook, trying to intimidate that principal to that teacher there. I don't believe, and I could be wrong, but I, I don't think that's appropriate, okay? That's, that's right. I think it was, let's see, the fifteenth, the sixteenth. About one-thirty in the afternoon, the president of the teachers' association, where I was substituting, who I know well, came to the classroom, talked to me, saying that he received a phone call from a member of the PTA president, I believe, expressing his concerns that I was upsetting the park here, that I was, I can't say the word, but that I was disturbing the superintendent, that he didn't like the idea of this, that president of the board didn't like this, that members of the Board of Education were upset by this, and that and that, you know, if this were to continue, that I could be in serious jeopardy of losing my position or positions if I were to apply someplace else. I won't stand for this. As a taxpayer, I have my right to express my opinion. I've never come to this board without anything other than concerns. If this persists, if this continues, if this happens again, if I am denied a position someplace else, there will be legal consequences to pay for this, both as a board, as administrator, and as a teacher who made these comments. I will not stand for this as a taxpayer, nor should I have to, and no taxpayer should, I understand, but I'm going to finish.
No, Mr. Stark.
I'm going to finish, Anthony.
If you're, if you're not going to adhere to the board rules, you, you could leave or we could have you.
No, you can do what you want.
So you can stop because you're disrupting the business of the board.
I'm going to finish.
I've been holding everybody to the four minutes, and I'm asking you to be respectful.
I'm happy for you, Anthony.
All right, so please be respectful, Mr. Stark.
I'm telling you right now, that no taxpayer, no taxpayer should have to.
Mr. Stark, I'm asking you to please be respectful of the board. Your time is up.
No taxpayer should have to go through this.
And thank you very much for your comments.
No taxpayers should be threatened.
Mr. Stark.
No taxpayers should be intimidated about employment.
Time's up.
Okay? And if you don't put an end to it, and I'm threatened again, trust me, I will be back.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members we'd like to address the board or the public?
Hi, I'm James, James Case. I wanted to come here today to just make an announcement. As I know, some of you know, but the larger public may not know, I want to announce an upcoming event for students happening in the Beacon community. It's in correlation with the National Day of Action Against Gun Violence on Friday, April twentieth. As many of you may know, the Student Victims of Portland have called for a national student walkout on April twentieth to bring legislative attention to school safety. Mayor Cassell and the city council recently followed that lead by passing a resolution declaring this a day of action against gun violence for the city of Beacon. Myself, Julie Shiroshi, and a number of volunteers have reserved the pavilion in Memorial Park on that day for eleven a.m. to three p.m. to create a safe space for student demonstration. We're providing free student lunches. We're creating, we're providing materials for art materials, for art making, sign making. A group is providing materials for letter writings, representatives, maybe a soapbox. We're coordinating with Chief Jangilis with the Beacon PD to help ensure student safety during the event. Mostly, I want to make sure that all students, parents, and allies know that this is the place you can go if you are choosing to act on this day, if you are choosing to participate. I particularly want to reach out to students, make sure you know about what we're doing. If you want to be involved beforehand, you can reach out to us. More information's available on our Facebook page. It's Beacon Day of Action. Mostly, we expect it to be positive, generative, educational, maybe. We're hoping for good weather, but we're trying to put a positive spin to an already somewhat dark subject.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seeing that, we're going to go to the superintendent's report. Dr. Landau?
Just want to quickly update everyone. This is not necessarily anything new from the last time, but just to remind folks, we are in the midst of conducting a search for two principals, one at Beacon High School, one at Forestwood Elementary, and now also Director of Technology. Aspects of the search that will involve stakeholders, we will, hopefully by Wednesday, I will have the two evening meetings scheduled at both those schools that I can meet with parents just to, A, talk about the process, and B, talk about things they want in a new leader of the building. I'll be doing the same with faculty and staff at those buildings in terms of having a meeting to talk about process and, and talk about what they want in a leader. We'll also be doing a survey of faculty, staff. We'll be doing a survey of parents at the high school. We will also be doing a survey of students in terms of what they want to see. We'll be doing a student focus group as well, and then we will be putting our committees together. Before we, as we're putting the committees together, I should say, my team and I will be conducting screening interviews with most of the candidates, the candidates who have the right credentials. Those will be quick kind of interviews, either by phone or Skype, and we'll be putting together, hopefully, about seven to eight people to interview with the stakeholder groups. Our goal is to have those stakeholder interviews the first week of May and have final interviews with me the second or third week of May, with appointing new principals and the director of technology by the end of May. We have a lot of applicants so far, and it looks like a really high-quality pool for both the elementary principal and the high school principal. We're excited to be moving forward with that. So I'll be putting some of the stuff out to those school communities in terms of specific dates. We're working on those. We're working on today. We'll probably finish tomorrow, and we're really excited to move that forward. I want to say thank you to James for letting us know what's going on. You emailed myself and the board last Thursday to, to let us know about the event. You know, things like this are rather complex for a school district, any school district, Beacon included, so we don't really have necessarily like some official district response to it right now. The one thing we do want to encourage is for parents to be involved in the process with their children, to also involve the schools with that, and that means by communicating with the school or, you know, giving permission to, you know, or coming to sign their children now from school to be a part of this whole thing. We'll try to spell out exactly what that means probably early next week sometime, but it's good to have a heads up about it. It's good to have the information, so thank you for that. That's it.
All righty. All right, committee reports including board comments, no or any? Want to go first?
First, I want to congratulate the boys and girls tracking today. They had a homey in a completely swept competition tonight. The boys won by almost forty points, and the ladies won by almost sixty points. So they had a really good show today, and they have a memory on Saturday, I believe. I also, we were talking about new electives and courses earlier about the high school, and from what we've been hearing from the students, they're... school, um, and from what we've been hearing from the students, they're very excited about these new courses, they, some students are a little bit confused, 'cause you gotta pick your classes, you get this packet from your guidance counselor, it has a brief description of what the course is, um, and some of them, some students are not sure exactly what it does, so we were thinking that some way to kind of give them a little more info into what actually these electives will entail, and, 'cause some of them are just a little confused because they're new, and, um, so that's taught me, Emmy and some other students were having, and I also want to mention that the play is this weekend, I just had to remind myself about that, that's probably Saturday someday, um, so that should be exciting, I will, you know, that would be good for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we'll, with the course thing, we'll, we'll contact you to just see what we can do to help with that.
Yeah, that would be good, thank you.
Hello, um, I just wanted to congratulate the valedictorian for, um, accepting her application to Yale, so, um, congratulations to my sister. So, just to touch on that a little bit more, um, I think it kind of shows that we are capable of training students who can do great things, so it's really nice to see, um, the curriculum changing at a younger age, so that hopefully one day we'll have more results like this.
That's great news, congratulations.
Can I ask, uh, what major the valedictorian was pursuing?
Um, maybe I'm...
Just curious, you don't have to answer. The major's second thought.
She's gonna be majoring in resting in her own world.
That's awesome. Alright, board comments, Mike?
Okay, uh, first of all, the Facilities and Operations Committee meeting is, uh, Wednesday, April eighteenth at seven PM.
I, that conflicts with the vows valedictorian dinner in, in Tarrytown.
Okay.
So, I was going to ask to...
Not the April one, the April one.
Oh.
You said the April one.
Oh, you said April.
This is April.
Okay.
April eighteenth.
So, I'm jumping the gun, it's May eighteenth. The May eighteenth FNO committee, um, conflicts with the, uh, vows valedictorian dinner, so I was gonna propose to have it to the sixteenth, which is the Monday, right?
No, the sixteenth is, is the one, the sixth, so the fourteenth.
Oh, the fourteenth, I'm sorry.
You're proposing, uh, May fourteenth?
May fourteenth, correct.
Yes.
At the same time.
Seven PM, uh, it's a Monday.
Yes.
Okay, ours will, so that's for May, but for April, it'll be the eighteenth.
Right, and it also conflicts with, with the policy.
Probably, yes.
So, asking, I was gonna ask the same thing in the policy.
We're at eighteen.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, it's quite all right. Uh, so for the committee, uh, we are, Anthony DiMato is setting up, uh, tours, uh, to go visit schools with their fields, to look at the different, you know, layouts and, and the factures, so he's working on that, or actually this week, uh, it's Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Um, also looking forward to the recommendations from Altaris to see if there's anything, uh, that, you know, facility-wise that needs to be done, so we can, you know, get that discussion at the, uh, upcoming Facilities and Operations Committee as well. Uh, question for Dr. Landau about the, um, about the, um, principals and the principal search, when it comes, how do you envision, you know, presentation of the candidates or your recommendations, uh, to the board? You know, sometimes we've had, you know, you walk in, hey, here's the person, and, you know, uh, is, is, any thought about how we're gonna step through that for the board's purpose? For the board's sake?
Uh, I'll say how I've done it in the past, uh, I have, um, in, in different districts, I mean, I've brought, um, either the information about the candidate, uh, in exact session for the board to respond to, or the candidate herself or himself. So, that's, that's been my practice, that the board is seeing a final candidate, a final recommendation from me.
Are you asking, are we changing procedure as to when we hire administrators, Mike? Like, typically, we had discussion in the past as to, did we want the administration to bring one or two candidates, right? So, if we haven't changed that procedure that they bring one, um, to the board?
Right, so there's been some, you know, we've fed back sometimes that A, you know, all of a sudden, we're presented with a single candidate, and we may not have a good, good enough picture in our mind, enough information to say, you know, with some intelligence, yes or no, we give our approval, so just, so I'll put that out to take that into consideration, um, maybe some, uh, some different ways, check procedure, to see what's written down. Thank you, that's all I had.
We haven't had that conversation in a while, as well, too, so it might have, I mean, the board might have changed what they wanted, I know when we had the discussion in the past, it was agreed upon just to keep it the way it was and bring one candidate to the board, because when they met with the board, it wasn't an, an interview, it was kind of a meet and greet, um, and it wasn't that the board wanted to do an interview, we want, we entrusted the superintendent at that time to make that hire, and it was their recommendation because they were involved in it, so. I'm not saying, I, I think that we could, if we wanted to, the board had that discussion, I'd be willing to place it on the agenda item, I think we have to do it sooner rather than later, just because the process is starting for...
Right, it's coming.
The principals, and, and, 'cause we have a couple administrative openings.
Right. Okay, it would be good to have a discussion to see if there's any, if we want anything different, if we expect anything different.
So, I'll put that on for the next board meeting.
Yes, please, the next board meeting.
Which is next Monday.
Yeah, it sounds also like there's a little bit of a different process, not just, just to piggyback on that, 'cause it's not in my comments, but that there are gonna be these stakeholder meetings, so it would be great to be just updated on what they're, I, I would be fine with a final candidate, but it would be great to know, like, incrementally what the feedback was, and then how the pool was narrowing, that would be helpful.
I think a discussion would be worth it.
Yeah, that may be the result of the discussion, 'cause that's an excellent, uh, suggestion.
Instead of just a, uh, a superintendent's report, maybe a Q and A with about it and stuff?
Yeah, and we can, we can try at a time, the, uh, stages so they're kind of in line with board meetings, so we can provide some of that sequential updating and exact about candidates.
Okay, okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mary?
Um, I attended the Duchess County School Board Association meeting with Phil on, um, last week.
Second or the third?
Oh, yeah, I can't remember. But, um, it was very interesting, uh, the topic was, um, education foundations, and so I went to talk about, um, my experience with Artsnet Foundation, and also to hear what other people brought in it, and it was, it was comforting, 'cause we land somewhere in the middle, there, there are places that are just starting out, there, um, there are foundations that are basically run by the superintendent and the business official, which I don't think is quite the way it's meant to be, um, so, there's better and worse, and, um, and some great suggestions that I passed on to Lori and Anna, so hopefully they can make good use of them. Um, and the other thing that was mentioned is that there will be an opportunity to sit down with Commissioner Aliyah, um, some, I don't have a date yet, but, um, Kelly Lafferty said to look out for that email, and I think that would be a worthwhile thing for as many board members as possible to participate in, so look out for that email. Um, the other thing, oh, curriculum meeting is the eighteenth? Wednesday, the eighteenth, at two forty, is it two forty-five? I'm pretty sure it's two forty-five.
Two thirty.
Two, oh, two thirty, good to know. And, um, and I also just wanted to echo actually what Emmy said, because I do, I think, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we're able to keep the class sizes small at the, at the younger level, I think that that can really help avoid, um, issues of reading and other things that we see, you know, it's really, I personally saw my younger son benefit from a really small classroom and really correct some issues that he had with his writing, so, and I don't know if the teacher would have been able to be so effective if it were a larger class, so I think, I think that's great, and I appreciate the effort and thought that's gone into the new, uh, elementary school schedule, I feel like that had gotten really, um, less effective for the kids over the years, so I'm excited to be, to be working on that, and I'm sad that Debbie Brennan's not here tonight to hear that we are fixing the meeting in minutes, but I'm sure that that information will trickle down to her quickly.
I already told her.
Oh, you did. She already knows. Um, she's, she's fought hard for that, she's, she's talked a lot.
I saw her at the Easter icon, and I was like, hey, I haven't seen you at the board meetings, um...
Just so you know, yeah, sure, I'm sure that made her very happy.
She was very excited.
Um, so, thank you, and thanks for the thoughtful security, um, I, I'm curious to hear more, but I do feel like that kind of, we, it's complicated for Beacon, because we're not just Beacon, and so I feel like someone who is going to cross over to the various cities that we cover and Hamlets or whatever, I think, I'm going to say Hamlet, um, is in the end gonna be more effective than something else, but it, I also think it's great to do it as a ten-month solution, so that we can really evaluate at the end of that. That's all, thanks.
Great. Thank you, Anthony?
Uh, good evening, so, um, I attended, well, I ran the, we had the university committee meeting on, uh, April third, uh, and there was a report out on, uh, Women's History Month, the grant submission, and what this school was doing to further diversity goal, um, and then we talked about the equity pro card, and, um, Matt announced that there was going to be, uh, it was an intern, or is it?
Someone getting their, yeah, internship hours for grad school.
So, that'll, that'll further the equity pro card, and just so folks know, the equity pro card, uh, will be a measure of results and a tool in order to progress towards achieving equity and helping us plan, um, the work to move us closer to this goal, so, um, I hope that was, I'm glad to, um, hear that news, and hopefully more news to come on that. The next diversity committee, uh, will be on Wednesday, May ninth, at eight fifteen PM, and, um, you know, I also would like to, um, echo the sentiments on, on the security. Um, I think that the director, uh, positions, I think, a, uh, a more applicable approach to addressing our security concerns, and, uh, that's all I wanna say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig?
Thank you, um, one, the second, what Mr. Rakowski said about having the discussion on the level of involvement when we get to key appointments, I think that this board has evolved in a direction where we realize that that is one of the most important things we do. Uh, certainly, we knew that when we were selecting a superintendent, I believe it extends, uh, also to some of the other top-level appointments, and I think, basically, we've been doing very well. There's a great deal of community interest when you get to the level of principle, as we have seen in the, uh, expressions of concern about, uh, transitions that have been announced and that are occurring, so, uh, I agree with that, we do need that discussion, and, uh, I'll leave that to you to put it on the agenda when it suits. Uh, secondly, um, the, on the diversity, I happened to sit in on the last committee meeting, and I thought it was quite productive, and, um, I believe that where this could very well go for future steps is for us to, uh, take another look at our board goals, which we haven't done since we adopted them, I think, more than a year ago, or more or less in that timeframe, so are we going to do a, um, annual update and review of that? Seems to me that that would be a good idea, and in, for example, in the area of diversity, we could consider taking what we have learned and come up with some more specific objectives based upon what we've come up with so far. I also want to talk about a very star baseball player that we have by the name of Lenny Torres. I don't think this meeting should pass without some acknowledgement of the tremendous publicity that he has brought to the Beacon School District with his amazing rocket-powered fastball and other baseball skills. It was fun to read about that, and I hope to receive more in the future. And I also wanted to mention something that may have been overlooked, and that is, in the music area, we had a French horn day, uh, of all things, I talk about a specialty, we, um, in the music department, uh, they collaborated with a group called Siegfried's Call, you may not realize this, but we have a horn shop in Beacon, it's a small business that sells French horns, customizes them, pairs them, I think we've used their services on some of our beat-up instruments, and, um, they brought in a group called the Transatlantic Horn Duo, which consisted of a player from the Baltimore Symphony and the Czech Philharmonic, that's Czech as in Czech Republic, as in Europe, and, uh, there were other students, not just some from Beacon District, but some horn players from other school districts who came in for a master class, that's a nice feather in our cap.
Thank you. Thank you. Kristen?
Uh, I just wanna say thank you for the curriculum presentation, it was really thorough, it was very interesting, clearly a lot of thought and effort went into it, um, uh, just a point for, you know, the future, um, obviously, I know we're sort of building now, but it's, it's a little bit hard to envision some of these things, like, the, one thing that stood out was the math models and integrating math models and what that would look like, so if just, in the future, if we implement these things, it would be great to have pictures of what that looked like and examples, and just describe what's happened in the classroom, and how it was applied, because, um, it, it sounds really exciting, I just, um, I'd love to see it, uh, in action. Um, with reference to hiring, I, uh, I think that we have, um, put someone in a position that we took great care of hiring, I think they should lead the process, I would really like to be updated incrementally on the feedback that we receive, and then how the, how the candidates track with that, so that would be helpful, but ultimately, this is somebody you're going to have to work with, and so, um, I, I don't feel like, I feel like we could meet the person you select as long as we understand the process that went behind it. As far as the budgeting process, I really, I'm grateful for all the work that's gone into, uh, how it's shaping up, I know we were sort of discussing, uh, at the last meeting, the distribution and what it reflects, and I think that, um, you know, there's definitely key, you know, there's spending on key positions that are happening at the elementary level, and I did appreciate what Emmy said about how it's good to, to see that investment early on and have it track, I think we are also, um, you know, in the process of, we're going to be selecting a new leader for the high school, and I think it, I think next year's budgeting process will be, will look much different when that person is here to advocate for a vision that they have for the building, and in the interim, I think a lot of good work has happened at the curriculum committee level, and also having the student board members has added a, a new dimension, I think, for us here to, to, that they can bring directly to us things that the students would like to see, um, and that they are, uh, also developing a really important skill, which is learning how to advocate for themselves and their own education, and that's, um, that will pay dividends as well, and that doesn't really cost us anything investing in it. The wellness committee, uh, we don't have a meeting scheduled, I think we need to kind of re-envision it for next year, it's, you know, we need, we need to get the policy finished, and then, uh, but I think, you know, in a way, it's, it, it's an umbrella that covers so much, you know, we did have, every meeting we cover, you know, there's nutrition, there's, um, you know, classroom culture and celebrations, there's movement, there's, um, uh, the, uh, what else? Like, I mean, uh, bringing in partners for, you know, other organizations and, uh, it's, and also, of course, the policy, and I, I just feel like, um, I, I think that in having such a broad mandate and having, uh, and having, you know, it's been a bit of a struggle, and I, I, I think a lot of the volunteers have kind of, um, burned out or not really understood what our focus is, and, um, I just don't, you know, I hate to see that happen, because, you know, you have people who are willing to put their time and put in the effort, and unfortunately, this year, we didn't get to have our, what, a lot of effort went into the Elementary Family Fitness Night, we had to cancel because of weather, there's nothing you could do about that. You know, just after Mr. Giammetta's presentation, there's a lot of things that could dovetail under athletics, there's a lot of things that we could continue to work with Karen about, there's, you know, it just seems like it might need to be broken apart into sort of more niche interests, and then have those groups report back to the wellness committee, I, I don't know, I just think it's worth discussing, um, re-imagining it going forward. Mr. Stark left, but since this all went into the public record, um, uh, you know, just taking things on face value as far as a question was asked, uh, related to a position, the board did pursue this question and received an answer that I think we all found to be satisfactory. did pursue this question and received an answer that I think we all found to be satisfactory. So, and then also, I think tasked that there's more scrutiny applied to the overall system. So, in terms of the end goal, I think that we did pursue that. Everything else, you know, I'm not going to pretend that there's not some other contacts happening, and I really do hope that we can all just move forward for the sake of kids in the district.
Thank you. Georgia?
I also want to think about the security presentation and looking forward with that. I have worked in a district that had like a security, someone to oversee, but, you know, and then also worked positively with SROs, so where they were helpful, you know, in the course of helping even in the security aspect as well. So, but I think it would be a good idea to have somebody who can like, kind of like oversee and kind of bring everything together, so I am in support of that. I do agree with Kristen regarding meeting the candidates, you know, like as a meet-and-greet, but not meaning to be fully involved in the interview process, but, you know, kind of get given those updates on that. The policy committee meeting will follow facilities on April 18th at 8:15, and then May 14th at 8:15. I know you looked at me like I was saying something.
April 18th.
April 18th, right? I know, April, right? April 18th at 8:15, and then May 14th at 8:15 as well. That's it.
Thank you. Kenny?
So, I, I think I screwed up, but I think safety is on the 14th, that 10th, am I right?
No, we, we pushed it back to the 18th.
Of?
April.
Of April, okay.
Yeah. Because we're, I wanted the audits to be a part of the conversation.
And that, it's at 10?
We're still awaiting the, 9.
On 9.
Yeah.
Okay, so safety is at nine o'clock on the 18th, and I guess we'll discuss all the things that have been happening in the district. The public relations committee met, thanks to Anthony and Dr. Landau, who carried that mission out due to my delay, but Dr. Landau now has a, it's called, that don't help me, a blog. A blog. No, I didn't. I'm going to say that to you. The blog, and the blog actually has broken down the data from the survey that has happened, so there's a list of information that is exciting to actually go through, so that we can determine where we are as a committee. I didn't schedule another day, right? So, I guess I should go before something, so maybe May 14th at 7? Right? Does that work for everybody? Is that good?
What did I swim?
Oh, that's you? Right. What are you doing? I always follow this over here. So, then I'll have to go, I'll have to go the 9th at 7, is that good?
What?
The 9th? May 9th at 7 PM, is that good? It would precede diversity, which is at 8:15.
What day is that?
Uh, Wednesday. May, you coming? May 9th at 7 PM. I'm like, Georgia, you enjoyed it?
Yes, I was.
So, is that good?
Yes.
Okay. And then I just wanted to ask if Navions, if we could possibly have a workshop on Navions, just to see where the district is with Navions, only because I just want to know for my own application, so that's just a request. And then, I know that it was going to take some time, and it probably will take even longer time, to address the issue with the after-school programs. I think that, again, I think the survey should go out through the students, and it's been something that I've been asking for, for a very long time, and I know that, Dr. Landau, you're new to it, but I'm sure you looked at the videos and saw me perseverate over this area. And the only reason why I do that is because a lot of the children do not have things to do after school, and so therefore, that time is dormant time, time that can be put to positive use, and I just find that if there is something that they're interested in, we can actually gain more from the students. So, I don't know how to help this process, but it is something that I, I would love to see. Like, there are students who can't be involved in sports due to medical situations. I've searched other school districts where those students are not on the team, but like an asset to the team, so they're a helper to say the football team, because they love football so much. Those are students that normally would just not participate in anything, and, and go home and find something else to do, that may not be structured activity. And so, if we really look at this from a standpoint that it can help students structure themselves, get them involved in things that are positive, it, it could be, you know, it could be useful to me in the district. So, I don't know how to help that process, but if somebody could help me, I would love to, before I leave the seat. And then, on Grow Your Own, I know you mentioned that there is some progress, some students dropped out, but there's students in, so I just want to update on where we are with that, because just keeping kids engaged is like, is something that I, you know, want to make sure that I do. And then, I think that's it.
All right. Thank you.
I just want to thank Cecilia, Emery, and Matt for our thorough job with the budget and presenting it and reaching out to all the constituents, and keeping in mind what the community is asking for, what the teachers are asking for, and what's in the best interest of the students. I know it's a hard task to do. You guys are going to start advertising it and presenting it well to the board here, so I think the public is going to be receptive to that piece as well. I like that you guys have a plan for this year, and also are looking for future considerations and already starting to look at that piece. I do agree with Mike about having a discussion as to how we want to proceed with, I'll call high-profile hirings in the district, and see if the board has changed what we are expecting with that piece. I know that Dr. Landau has been keeping us in mind as to what the progress is and stating it to the, the community at the board meetings, and I know when he goes out about what the process is going to be, I know surveys are getting worked on and so forth, so I think it's just important that, you can't talk about it too much, because people need to know how to get involved and so forth. So, I just want to commend you guys for doing it, and I know it was a tough task to follow up with last year, we had over 80%, you know, approval rate, and I'm thinking that it's going to be that way as well. Going to what Meredith was saying, I think it's important that, you know, as a board, we're showing that we're invested in RTI as well as AAS response to intervention and the AAS by making sure that our class sizes stay low. I mean, looking at a district our size and seeing last year, we, how we added five teachers, and now we're looking to add another six, that in itself is an intervention to the students, as Meredith was saying, when you have a class size of 20, 22 compared to 30, that individualized attention and the students learning in groups is intricate and a key part to it. So, I think that's a good way that we're modeling as to how we want to support all students, and I think that if we continue into that, and we need to expand that on the curriculum piece, I was happy with the curriculum presentation. I still do challenge to get more of that reading assistance in that 4 through 8 level. I think that the K3 has been really solidified, but looking how we can meet the needs of those 4 through 8 students and really target that instruction piece. But I'm happy with where we're going and having that benchmarking and so forth for the map, I think is going to be the case, so we can have that targeted instruction, especially when we have those low class sizes, to really give that specific instruction piece. Besides that, Meredith, thank you for picking up the Dutchess County School Board's piece on Bill's behalf. Everyone should have received an email from them on March 20th. This Saturday is the annual...
March?
Yeah, they sent it, in March, they sent a letter on March 20th, asking about the annual meeting on this Saturday, the 14th at 11:30 at the Career Technical Institute, the dining room, where they're going to have an expo after the annual meeting for the Dutchess County Board. Anybody from the board is willing to go, they did ask that you are speaking by the 3rd, however, I think that if we, if you wanted to attend and you could attend, they would, etc., I don't think they'd turn it down. So, I don't know if Bill's going to that, I haven't heard him say that he was.
He didn't mention that he was. I cannot attend it, unfortunately. I can't go this year. I've gone in the past, but I can't go this year.
All right, so that...
Something you really, I mean...
Well, we're having a special meeting on the 16th, right, to talk about the budget, and then we have to vote on the Dutchess County budget on the 24th, I believe, right, Kelly? Are we voting on the Dutchess County, Bosie's budget on the 24th? You could get more information at that meeting and get to know the candidate piece for who's running for those seats at that annual meeting. So, I don't know how, if we don't have a member of this board going, how we could get that information prior to the 24th to vote on it.
Yeah. You know, I can call Bill and see if he is planning to go, and if not, let everybody know. I can maybe, what are the hours?
The meeting is at... 11:30 AM, and following it, they have, the kids are cooking for you, so the culinary students...
I know. I think the RGP is because you get to go in the room when the meeting is actually held at, and then the rest of the event is like, is free-flowing, so you go from floor to floor, but...
Then at 1:00, they have the expo piece.
Right. I'll, I'll call Bill, and if, if he can't, if he wasn't already planning to go, I may be able to check my plans around.
Yeah, I'll just have to face with you, because I'd love to check it out, it sounds really interesting. I just, I have kind of a somewhat fluid situation right now.
It was really, this was my first time going to the Dutchess County School Board meeting, and it was, it was really great, and they, I feel like, is there a little bit smaller than Nisba, they're, they're a little more light on their feet, and they've got a lot of ideas about advocacy, and so, yeah.
That's what we've been using for the advocacy and legislation piece, is the Dutchess County School Boards Association, because they do take what the component districts are asking for, and as a con, Bill goes as a representative to kind of relay what the board as a whole is asking, and then they come up with three or four advocacy or legislative points to present to it.
Can't we just step in and Bill's going?
I mean, it's going to be hard for Paul to go anymore. He seems...
It is a great way to network as well with other board members to see what...
You learn so much, just, yeah. No, I, I was thinking of volunteering to take Bill's place.
So, I just wanted for this, on the Saturday, the 14th, to remind people that, and, because it does affect, you may want some more information for the board meeting on the 24th for that vote, and if we don't have anybody go, it's going to be hard to get that specific information that if you had any questions about. So, just keep that in mind, and if you need help with it, we can ask Kelly to help you out in getting up there. All right. That's all I have. All right, so the first unfinished business that we had was to discuss the board retreat. So, Matt has been talking to the district administration and the building administration about having Sean Bridewell come and do some work with diversity. Sean is also the same person that we were talking about doing a board retreat. He gave me some dates, and the dates were... July 27th, August 10th, and Friday, August 10th, and Saturday, August 11th, and he might be able to do August 3rd and August 4th. I know Matt was working with him about coming to the district maybe later in August to do something, so I was asking the board to see if we could couple it, so when he's coming down for the administrative, it would kind of be fiscally responsive if we could piggyback that with...
I'll return some tomorrow.
To see, but I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that we're looking for August and to piggyback, piggyback off of what he's doing with the administrators, so that same weekend, and I think it was, what, August 19th, 20th? August 19th, 20th?
I will, I will be up to it. I have a family reunion.
Okay. So, then the other one is the 10th and 11th.
I think maybe you should do an email polling of the board, see who's got vacation plans and see what works.
Or if you want to submit, if you know you're going to be out in August...
Oh, I will be for part of the time, I don't care if you want.
But if you want to send them to me, just send them to me with everybody, so then I, and I'll try and compile it on a calendar, so block off dates. I know that we wanted to wait until, you know, after the election and so forth, so I think that's a great idea, just send me the dates that you're not going to be available, and then I will start crossing them off the calendar, and whatever's left, that's what we'll propose. Now, if you're taking a two-week vacation, you know what? You're going to have to...
I, I travel for work.
I'm just, I understand. You're going to employ...
Oh, scat to them. Good sentence.
All righty, any other discussion about the board retreat? The topics, I know that we settled on and stuff, so...
Do we stop?
Yeah, there were three ones. Don't ask me a real, any more.
No, I'm not, don't do it. I don't want, I don't want to...
All right, so the next topic was the military children recognition. We're looking to do that on April 24th. Just a reminder, she's aware of purple, and we're, I know that Emery's been working with the building administration, and Cecilia has been working with the building administration as getting names of students that this affects and so forth, so we would invite them and then recognize them on April 24th.
Tuesday, April 24th.
Tuesday, April 24th.
Oh, okay, so it's not a meeting.
That is a meeting.
It is a meeting. It is a Tuesday, meaning board meeting.
Okay. How we recognize them. Is that the discussion?
Yeah, that's the discussion. I'm not party planning.
No, I saw that, so we should, like, they can cut cakes and some type of, red, white, blue thing, you have 30 cupcakes from, what's your name?
Does everybody find with getting some refreshments and food?
Just send us coffee, then you have a cupcake session.
Huh? Cupcakes is food.
No, it's a snack.
Refreshments and snacks?
Yeah.
Because we have a number of people so far, like, do we have a whole...
We do not, because we...
I hope you make something to save money.
Yeah, should we pass a hat around or something? I'll give you the money.
We, we had to clarify it a little bit, because we weren't clear in the direction, so we got a lot of other information, but the, the month is pretty clear, it's children of whose parents are in the military, so we're going to streamline that, so we're trying to finalize it. I, it is in a Google Sheet, Kelly created a Google Sheet and sent it around, so we can share it with the board once we get that information.
So, Meredith, you were, oh, nevermind.
She's going to...
She's going to bake?
She's going to bake, yeah.
Meredith will bake. So, you guys are okay with having like, refreshments and snacks?
Yes.
All righty, any other discussion about that? Does everybody have purple? If not, get some purple.
I know. I have to be serving pearls.
All right. All right, moving to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education make more effective use of a sign by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the boards who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on a consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right for board members to be heard on any issue. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anybody wants to pull? Hearing none, I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda, 11.02 through...
Motion to approve consent agenda items 11.02 through 11.1, 1, 2, and 8, right?
Is there a second?
Second.
Kristen, comments or questions? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries...
Meredith has another question.
7-0, and thank you for the donations, which was 11.07. 11.07. All right, I need a motion to accept 12.01, which is the addendum resolution 040998B.
So moved.
Kristen?
Second.
Kenny, a second? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual, and the board is not expected to take action. Motion.
Second.
Anthony, Kristen's comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much.